I'll take a minute for the live stream. You can start the live stream. Oh, you've started it. I see that. Okay. I don't think we're stopping. I just want to make sure one out of this. Can you hear me right here?
There's a lot of feedback.
Is that feedback? So you can't hear Jen? Right. Or Heather? Or Heather?
No, no, no mics are on.
The mics aren't on yet. She can't yet. Sue, I can't, I'm not sure if I can hear you, but if you can hear me, the mics aren't on yet. Everyone's going to be body mic.
Okay, awesome.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
It will be broadcast here and come down.
I need... Is there a headphone on this? That would also work.
Sorry that I made you start late. I wanted to make sure I got to all my kiddos to know what to do. Sue, I'm sorry for the delay. We just want to make certain that we can be heard by the live audience in front of us and the live audience online. And we also want to make sure that board members who are joining us virtually can be heard by us and we can hear them. So we're just fixing, checking the audio one more time. So sorry for the delay. It could be, it could be legitimate, yeah. The mics aren't working, so you're gonna have to come out. Glasses, I'm gonna find the jack without my glasses. Sorry, everyone, for the delay. We just want to be certain that we're audible to you in the room as well as to the people that are watching us livestream. So excuse us while we just check one last thing with our audio. Thank you for your patience. Ms. Santa Vasi, can you hear us and can you speak to us so we can check to see if we can hear you?
Yeah, everything sounds great on my end.
Thank you. Next slide, Sue.
This is Roxy Fifer. Aye. This is Roxy Fifer. That one second. This is Roxy Fifer. This is like the Heather Caxton and Nicole Renaudby attended the meeting briefly as opposed to person?
Yes.
That one second. And whether that's a person or a woman? Or a gentleman? Aye. Any talk? Okay. One minute. The three, where is that? For three, maybe a problem. It's very, very strong. It's very, very good. The three, the three, the three. The three, they have to go. My three, three. My three, three. My three, three. Can you go back? I'm hoping. Last one, last one. The other one. One. We have three, one, two, three. For three, he's about the other. And three, he's small. For three, he's pretty big. For three, he's small. For three, he's small. Look, he's small. He's small. For three, he's small. He's small. He's small. He's small. He's small. And he's small. He's small.
And I think it's because we're using my computer. It only does one thing or the other. Well, that headphone jack is canceling my mic. Can you hear me now, Sue?
Yes.
It's the headphone jack, okay?
And some stuff.
I'm gonna mute you here. Okay, Sue, can you still hear me?
Yes.
For three, Owen Moore. Second grade, Blackie. Third grade, Adrian Moore. Fourth grade, Pat Pacheco. Sixth grade, Alan Moeller. Sixth grade, Claire. Seventh grade, Al Smith. Eighth grade, Anna Turner. Ninth grade, Olivia Barson. And third, Dana Moore. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Sue, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna keep it plugged in to my phone. Okay, now we have the March Students of the Month. We'll start with the Rotary Student of the Month for March with Nathan Scorola. Kindergarten, Scotland King. First grade, Piper Chassie. Second grade, Kate Mazzarella. Third grade, Zoe Catterton. Fourth grade, Tyler Callahan. Fifth grade, Calvin Diaz. Sixth grade, Skylar Mills. Seventh grade, Brianna Renalter. Eighth grade, Sophia Coer. Ninth grade, Alba Papriki. Tenth grade, Marissa Van Ormer. Eleventh grade, Mel Scrappy. And twelfth grade, Nathan Scorola. Congratulations. For February, we have the Rotary Student of the Month, Rachel Foal. Kindergarten, Nella Remote. First grade, Adelina Pellet. Second grade, Brooke Callahan. Third grade, Olivia Mower. Fourth grade, Emily Mazzarella. Fifth grade, Elise Ariola. Sixth grade, Colton Patchell. Seventh grade, Mackenzie Chassie. Eighth grade, Andrew Soria. Ninth grade, Claire Saunders. Tenth grade, Sophia Hires. Eleventh grade, Zachary Stevenson. And twelfth grade, Rachel Foal. Congratulations. Nice job. Next, we have our January Students of the Month, and starting with the Rotary Student of the Month, Elijah Dwyer. Kindergarten, Logan Kennedy. First grade, Owen Hawley. Second grade, Ava Nemens. Third grade, Scarlett Alvey. Fourth grade, Britta Sagafi. Fifth grade, Jack Hallway. Sixth grade, Taylor Stedallik. Seventh grade, Addison Patchell. Eighth grade, Scott Lanzera. Ninth grade, Valia Rusman. Tenth grade, Kylie Decker. Eleventh grade, Kaya Johnson. Twelfth grade, Patrick Riley. And we had four 12th grade students of the month in January. Oh, five, sorry. Patrick Riley, Anna Calavecchio, Elizabeth Marble, Kirsten Sundell, and Elijah Dwyer. Congratulations. That's all we had for the Student of the Month recognition for the past school year. The next set of recognitions will be starting with any recognitions that the students in Thomason Public Schools received throughout the year. So we will start with the Thomason National Invention Convention winner from seventh grade, Chloe Samos. We have a Litchfield County Poster Winner for 2022 for the Connecticut Fire Prevention Calendar, fourth grader Britta Sagafi. 10th Annual Celebration of Young Photographers Award goes to senior Nathan Scorola. For artwork, What's Right with School segment, and was also featured on News Channel 8, senior Kirsten Sundell. We have 400th Day School Contest winners. We have fourth grader Christopher Carlo. Fourth grader Tyler Callahan. Fifth grade, Ryan Swobkin. And sixth grade, Ariana Rinaldi. Congratulations. You four may go down to the cupcake table if you would like. We're gonna have another set come up. Oh, okay. You can use my mic in this. Yeah, but for the meeting, the Zoom meeting? Okay, we have four Litchfield County Superintendent Association Recognition Awards. The first one is for Rachel Foal, grade 12. Patrick Riley, grade 12. Megan Campbell, grade 8. And Ariana Rinaldi. Next, we have four Cabe Leadership Awards. First one's for Anna Calavecchio, grade 12. Nathan Scorola, grade 12. Brooke Bowden, grade 8. And Andrew Soria, grade 8. Sue, could you go back to the CAS Award slide, please? The Connecticut Association of Schools Arts Award. There it is. Thank you.
Okay. We have two awards. For the Connecticut Association of Schools Arts Award, two third graders. We have Jay Boyer and Katie Bell. Oh, after time, I have to... Oh. Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. The more Cabe Awards, we give four awards. Grade six, Matthew Johnson, and grade six, Tyra Honey. Okay, that goes through our recommendations. All of us, we have three minutes longer. We're gonna have the standing name of our representative on the board. We have a few presentations and then a little bit of ready. We do have a special presentation. The Thomason Board of Education would like to recognize Mr. Henry Azawiki and Mr. Jeff Azawiki for their generous donation of their skid steer for the nature center's trail construction. Both gentlemen were supportive in contributing to the nature center with their assistance with machinery repairs and all their time and labor in constructing the trails of the nature center along with Mr. Craig Thomason, former technology high school teacher. We are very thankful for them. Would Mr. Henry Azawiki and Mrs. Caroline Azawiki please come up? Thank you, Mrs. Rose Awiki. Next, we have our presentations. Our first presentation is...
Yes.
So the various parts of our letter that is covered by the mission and the change during here since that this year of make go to the A goal is a big difference this year for the next line. He decided to send letters to all 10, 8, 10, 11th grade students. Um, basically, he got the criteria. They were against hard round scores, low school rates, and then for those who did not take smart rounds, they get a P G T scores in the grade. What we're trying to do is to make sure that all students regardless of who they are, are willing to take the higher education courses. We want to make sure that our students are being challenged. So this year, we decided to do a very important thing and also to do to set up others from now on to the whole. So we decided to do a process that's actually made from a super and to see on a global surface how we can create with our highest achievement. So we made 10, 33 letters was sent out and then this is Mr. Mabel and this secretary. We found that 31 of them are taking the B. We have various hundred courses at the base of what that is a very important challenge. That is currently enrolled in these higher education courses. Are 8, 11th graders, 6th graders sent out, 28th, and currently are also that are being challenged with the lower as they're being challenged. But it's still, we thought, um, our students can be those who are a bit challenging because if they don't take those courses, it's not going to surround you right in the rear of how this level courses are going to get there. And why is it important? This is important because in terms of the task. It also ensures I think among all students regardless of race, creed, special patient, being English language writers, or anything. And then provides students to school these courses in a way where it's serious and agile. By the way, I said a little deeper even to students who didn't have, um, a lot of time in those courses with Mr. Mabel. He had his possible reach out to each other, and I had a prior shot on maybe now, and he reached out a person personally to ask about the relationship. This called him and each one of the members said, would you consider taking one of these courses to make sure that they have to direct here? And so we're hoping that those are going to be questions that will be even higher.
Yeah, no, Ms. Podolski, I have a question. Actually, it's more of a statement of observation from what you've done with this report because you shared this report with the Achievement Committee last month. Because we have an audience with students in it and a good number of them are not yet 10th and 11th graders, I just wanted to reemphasize this is a very important opportunity that's offered here to students to have this rigorous coursework. And the UConn Early College Experience Courses give them college credit before they graduate high school. So for those of you who are parents of younger students, this is definitely something that you would want to look for when they take their SAT in those grade levels to see if you're getting that invitation. But more importantly, don't wait for the SAT. Start taking those rigorous courses as we learned our 10th graders are already doing, not waiting for that letter. So if you disagree with what I'm saying, by all means, chime in in a different way, but I think that that's pretty much what I discerned from when you presented to the Achievement.
Students, um, feeling that they might have a chance, they feel that they're on our way to their dreams to have the level of work that they need to get to the class level. So, um, this is really nice to see that they're in that, um, you know, ready for the next.
And then just one more comment, the numbers of students that qualify for the rigorous coursework, it's more than 50% of the total class. Would that be an inaccurate statement? I think that's rather accurate. So that also tells you the caliber of student at our high school and that is something also that I think parents of, that most, most of our parents know if they're in the high school, but our younger, the parents of younger students may not necessarily know that a good number, the majority of our students qualify for this rigorous coursework and do very well on those standardized tests that mean something in getting into those higher level courses and into college. So thank you.
Speaking of challenging students at all levels, um, better teacher in America has the difficult job of challenging students at every level of activity. I believe from her statistic that in any given class in the United States, there are five reading months represented. Neither of the best teachers, better teachers, that is a difficult, um, sustainable challenge to do. So what we want to do is we want to make sure that all of our students are being able to like ability. And sometimes our higher performing students are the ones that sort of post. And so because we are so small near Thomason and we're involved in the rest of the resources that seems to do properly for this, but we also like to share with you that you're not reluctant to get that much. We decided to do this to finalize this program this year. It is called learning, nutrition, and academic program. We're starting with our 6th graders next Saturday. And this is why we're all looking forward. So we want to make sure that the challenging students are in a phase. We want to increase their capacity with all the information that they have, one, they have a lot of science approach. We want to create specific agents to send the police that students demonstrate for their effective, kind, and capable and have issues with their own learning. So that's going to be all. It's really challenging to discover the activities in that. The literature performs some scientific experiments to your deck. That's the part that means it's been created and I find like it doesn't do a great experience. And most of all, we want to be extremely valid and follow the students along. So with this small private program, I want to expand the students' order a bit, right? But we want to see how students respond when it's like, oh, they are fine with it. So what is the question here? We look back on the, put a shout out on your, you know, asking other math or be the major sports, we, um, I don't have it or. And as we go through the hard round scores, obviously, you know, it's not a very, um, safe, um, mistake that Mr. She said. So why is the national percentage of work? When child comes home, the American report, it says that their read level is at 94%. Well, what that is saying is that if your child out of course, 94% of all students across nation in reading, that is a very powerful statistic. And one that can be reviewed. So we decided to look at the national percent of child schools which is reasonable for this to be going. So we show these wonderful children that want to have a. Sorry. Okay. So any questions for me? I'm not quite aware of the word of the very students, um, and that's the reason that he's all such as we're going to be. Okay, so anyway, I think about this, uh, who's far behind coach, I explore things that are changing, and I just want to hold the values to more than being. All right, please, we're wishing we knew that for school. And it's a nice thought that she brought around with her, right? And we have the pleasure of writing this story right with this to get together with his and his side. But what I'm receiving work from start to finish is the theme of positive project distribution with a very thought was the F R R, but it hasn't been more than five years. And they won't mention it here, but we did receive a $500 grant from the authority, which we don't need. And I have a wonderful presentation about the project that we just finished. And I think there's a prime, a fine show which you might add to your minutes about.
Next slide, Sue. One more. Bring the mic down.
Also, they were very important, and not only those animals, but also the variation of money that animals are very important for. All right, for the issue in there, animals are starting for money, it's a big part of the. I just think it's awesome to look at the name of the art of that. I'm going to buy one. First, we are so ready to turn it up. Second, we decided to look for the right company. Third, we want to change the world. Fourth, we need to see what's going to happen. Fifth, we want to have a commercial sale and then we'll rest the foundation. Sixth, we created a shot of water moving in the chat. Seventh, we need to share this people. We need to, eight, I have to, I have to listen to this, great and horrible, and horrible, important. Five, we need, um, we need to. Five, we need to, um, we need to. So we, um, we have, um, times to those things. We need to, um, we need to. But also, I think, the huge test, and we are 300 to 400, we're in the first one. Our team to ensure it's safe, so we have to, we're able to meet animals and we're able to power the nation, obviously, we have to. In case of organization, in this, which our teachers, there's someone who's a church, they're very calm and others who are trying hard because of the cost.
Does anyone have any questions? Great presentation. Sue, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next, we're going to move on to the Student Representatives Report. Are you able to hear McKenna speaking, Sue?
Um, if she started speaking, then no.
Now, is Caesar on? Is Caesar here? Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this time, we will recognize and thank Isabella and McKenna for being members of the board for the past two years. We've enjoyed having you. You've done a great job. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. So next, we will have the swearing in of our new student representatives. Caesar Vales will remain on as one of our student representatives. He was also one this past year, but I would like to call up Delaney Jones.
This is specifically for Superintendent Cost and the Thomason School administrators. Decisions were not easy, however, you remained committed to the district's mission and goals while keeping in mind the health and safety of the staff and students of Thomason Public Schools. We recognize the countless hours you worked and thank you again for going above and beyond your duties during this crisis. So thank you very much. Superintendent Cost, your transparency and efficient communication was also greatly appreciated. To the teachers and staff of Thomason Public Schools, almost every aspect of your professional lives changed due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I am grateful for the way you responded. Your loyalty and dedication contributed to the success of the past school year. Thank you for your flexibility, creativeness, resourcefulness, and your continued support of your administration and of the Board of Education as we encountered uncharted territory, learning, and working with COVID-19. And again, I extend to you, teachers and staff, our sincere gratitude. And to the parents and guardians of the students of Thomason Public Schools, the Board of Education is thankful for your patience and understanding, for your ideas and feedback, for keeping your children home when needed and keeping the safety and health of the community a priority. We know it has been a very difficult year, and your involvement with your child's education and working together with the school has contributed to our success. You are incredible parents, grandparents, and guardians, and again, I thank you for caring so deeply about the education of your children. And to the students of Thomason Public Schools, thank you for all of your hard work and perseverance during this difficult and uncertain time as we faced the hurdles of COVID-19. You achieved many milestones, you worked hard, and we all admire your dedication. The commitment and effort you have shown during the remote, hybrid, and in-person learning is inspiring. You are the future and our nation's guiding light, and we are so proud of you. The Board of Education will continue to work according to our district's mission and goals, and thank you all again, and have a wonderful summer. Which is not included in this letter of gratitude, I'd just like to say just thank you to the members of the Board of Education for all of your hard work and hours that you put in, meetings, emails, calls, last minute discussions. It was really an unexpected, unusual year, and I'm sure that none of you signed up for this, but thank you all again for being supportive and doing a great job. So thank you. Thank you. Move on to the exciting part of the evening, the superintendent's report. Oh gee, thank you. Um, so I will keep it exciting by just noting that the first part of my report is correspondence, and there's really no need for me to elaborate any further than what's listed there. Next slide, please, Sue. Further correspondence you see there, and some of the correspondence listed under the Connecticut State Department of Education have been, excuse me, highlighted in my distance learning report this month. Next slide, please. Under your reports, under my reports, you see the administrator's report and the enrollment report, as well as the distance learning enrollment report, and then my distance learning report for this month, which follows the format of my distance learning reports since the beginning of the creation of distance learning due to the pandemic, which summarizes what we've done up to this point, and then brings you up to speed on what has happened since the last report, and then offers you some anticipated actions that might come in the future. And if I could jump right to the anticipated actions, um, we are obligated as a district, statewide, every district has to create a safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan for next year in order for us to qualify for the new American Recoveries Act funding. What that is, is a continuation and partial recreation of our reopening of schools plan that was written last year that the board took action on back in July. This plan has to be revisited in order for us to maintain the funds that we're getting from the government. It would have to be revisited four times between now and 2023. So that information is detailed there. Other information in this report, since we last met, Governor Lamont has signed Executive Order 12A, I believe he signed it on the 20th of May, whereby he requested that the Department of Public Health indicate which types of businesses or venues would be required to continue wearing masks, even though there was a loosening of the mask restrictions on the 19th of May. And the Department of Public Health has designated schools and daycares as a place where we wear masks inside of our buildings all of the time regardless of vaccination status. That executive order will stay in place until otherwise indicated by a future executive order, or if that executive order is allowed to expire or less. Having the meeting here in the upper house allows people to remove masks because we're in the upper house, having functions outside of the high school under the tent also allows us to remove our masks, but we are still asked to continue with our mitigating strategies until otherwise described. So heavy-duty cleaning of high-touch surfaces is still part of that strategy, social distancing is still part of that strategy, and remember that social distancing is ideal at six feet or farther, but we are allowed in schools to be three to six feet apart. So that is where we stand now at the end of my report, as always, I showed the board the actions that you have taken since the beginning of the existence of this report so that you can see the work that you have done as a board to support our efforts, the efforts that Beth described in her letter most especially. Moving on from that report, we have several contracts that were signed since our last meeting. We also have, thank you, Sue, for going back, we have no new grants, but we anticipate some new ones at the next meeting, and then we have some fundraising requests that were made, and I want to give a shout out to our PTA. Our policy does not require the PTA. Yes, hang on one moment, please, I'm going to stop my report so we can say goodbye to our two seniors who are leaving us. Isabella and McKenna, thank you so much, we know you have to scoot to the next very important meeting that you have. Yes, yes, we'll see you there, we will see you there under the tent. Wonderful to have you, thank you. So we are not obligating, we don't obligate outside entities to tell us about their fundraising plans, however, the PTA, for the years that I've been in the district, they have given us a heads up as to what their fundraising plans are and have asked us to sanction them, to somewhat approve them, or at least be able to work with them collaboratively on that. So I want to give a shout out to the PTA. Not all PTAs behave that way. Most PTAs behave as an independent entity, and they do not let the superintendent or the building principals know what's going on with their fundraising. So I thank the PTA leadership for continuing that annual tradition of letting us know what fundraisers they're planning for the year. Next slide, please. The next part of my report lists the new hires, the transfers, and the new assignments for employees. Next slide. It also includes resignations, retirements, and stipends. I ask that the board acknowledge my notification of these different personnel changes, specifically the new hires, transfers, reassignments, retirements, resignations, and stipends. This is my. Yes. It's our new school messenger system, which connects with Power School. It will do the same thing and a few other additional things, like allow for text messages to be chronicled, so that if we needed to refer to a text message in the past because of a statement that was made about a text message, we'll be able to record that and keep track of those as well as emails. Thank you. And that's thanks to Ms. Bedoski, who did the research. No wonder. Thank you.
Yeah. It's going to be, I mean, for sure, it's like, it's like, it's a signature, like, that facility, you know, it's going to be perfect. Also, as all the privacy. On the wall.
On the wall.
Yes. On the, on the, on the players, the different buildings, and possibly have, could get app on the wall, just reading, giving messages, fires, in favor of, also, I don't want to send out, which is, you know, check what it means, it's lost, thousands of people.
It's hard to find. 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 Yeah, absolutely. It's going to be, I mean, for sure, it's like, it's like, it's like, it's like, it's like, that facility, you know, it's going to be perfect. It's about, and also, as all the privacy. On the wall.
On the wall.
Yes. On the, on the, on the players, the different buildings, and possibly have, could get app on the wall, just reading, giving messages, fires, in favor of, also, I don't want to send out, which is, you know, checking what it means, it's lost, thousands of people. It's hard to find. 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 It's hard to find.
The archival part is what's different. So teachers now can communicate with their students through the school messenger app or through email or through Power School, but what we're looking for is something that does that and archives communication, because we do have some of our staff utilizing text messaging with students because they are meeting on a Saturday to fire off rockets in the field and do their test, and you're not going to email a student, they don't respond to email the same way. So this would allow a teacher to do a text that would be a secure text that we would be able to archive that communication, and we would also be able to authorize who put or use it. So it tightens things up that already exist, and it brings more protection to the students. No. The rest of my report, it contains a new FMLA request, and the rest of the items that are typically found in my report, I have no new information on, which would be intern, student, teachers, field trips, and disposal books or records. That concludes my report. Okay, next, we have the committee reports. We have a report from the achievement committee.
We did meet on May 27th, and Bedoski presented the bigger information, which we heard earlier, and the programming we heard earlier, and we did discuss the results of our vibrating tests.
And I didn't want to go into that in more detail, or? Thank you. Thank you.
And we paid attention, we paid attention to our first graders, pulled out individual students to video them. When you see this, you're going to be like, it is amazing. Some of them share their perfect things that they love themselves. Some of them just like, things like, I learned to be kind to my family, walk together, and we had to get along. If that's the only thing that child learned this year, that's really enough. I mean, it is, it's just sometimes that'll be different things for different reasons, and we have to learn kindness, passion, dignity. And so, then some of the kids, you know, talk about, we're actually, oh, it's second grade, so I'm like, okay. That's pretty good. That's a great thing. You know, things that they work with their family, that our first grader, we need, share something in the chat, and share it to me. I mean, is that not honoring? I think it is. That's, that's, that's pretty amazing for a first grader. So, that video is going to go on through a conversation. Tomorrow, I'll be interviewing four big experts today. I got seniors in nice comments.
Thanks, Jessica.
If I could just reemphasize, because Beth, you said it in your letter of gratitude, the reason why our students have been successful this year is because of the efforts of everyone, everyone. That is something that is a quality of Thomason as a whole that is not seen in many other towns or school districts. And parents work very hard making sure that their children didn't miss out on learning when we were shut down, starting way back to last spring. And the staff worked very hard. A whole lot of new learning went on, on so many levels. So, we have a lot to be proud of. To say that the state and the nation are concentrating on learning loss, and we in Thomason are still seeing progress and success, you can't ask for anything better than that. That shows our teamwork. So, it was great being at that Achievement Committee meeting because it showed us concretely the outcome of everyone's collective efforts for our children.
Thank you. Okay, any other updates from the Achievement Committee?
We are just going to continue this work going forward.
Thank you, Roxy. Do we have an update from the Budget Committee, or we just have the Business Manager's Report?
We do just have the Business Manager's Report. An item of note that we're going to be asking to approve is the School Readiness Grant, which we do annually to support our school, both the Blackstone School and Taylorburg.
You all received a copy of the Business Manager's Report in your email. Do we have a motion to vote to accept the submission of the School Readiness Grant as presented?
Roxy Finer, I vote to accept the submission of the School Readiness Grant as presented.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
This is Roxy Finer. I vote to accept to approve the Business and Finance Report and Expenditures per Policy 3432, 3433 Business Non-Instructional Operations Budget and Expense Report Annual Financial Statement as presented.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. The Policy Committee did not meet prior to this special meeting, but we will be meeting on June 14th.
I'd like to make a comment to remind the Board, if you would allow, to Beth, regarding the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee has been working on our dress code policy, and we will be meeting on the 14th because we are going to that next step where we are going to make a second lead and be ready for action. We are not going to take action on that policy until it's applicable. The changes that we made to the dress code policy are the removal of masks and references to face mask coverings in that dress code policy. Right now, we can't remove that language because we are mandated by the Governor's Executive Order. However, by doing this ahead of time, the Board is showing that they are making every effort to be ready for when the mask mandate is dropped, or I should say lifted, right? And when it is lifted or when the executive order expires, then we can very quickly put into action this updated policy, which removes all mask references from our dress code. I just wanted to emphasize that. That's why we are still meeting on the 14th, because we don't want to skip a beat and not get into that ready position with our dress code policy and the elimination of mask language so that it's ready to go when the time comes. Thank you.
Heather will be there, ready to take notes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Roxy Finer makes motion to adjourn.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:23 PM.